Call the December second, two thousand twenty council meeting to order.
Has on here, it's December the fourth.
Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer and invocation and fact that they.
Let's assume they add to the prayer. Our Father, once again, we come to thank you for the bounty, for blessing that I bestowed upon us, for this opportunity to come and serve the citizens of Apokka. We ask for your continued guidance, your leadership, and your directions as we make a difference in their lives and the individuals within our city and within our county. We ask you to continue to bless us now. It's only you can. In thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fight for today. Five years naval adventure torpedo bombers with fourteen men aboard left Fort Lauderdale Naval Air Station as part of Flight nineteen for a training mission. It was scheduled to be a routine training flight for no more than three hours. Two hours into the flight, the planes experienced instrumental malfunctions. Their compasses and backup compasses had failed, and they could not ascertain their positions. Radio facilities on land could not locate their planes either. The last transmission from the squadron leader was prepared to ditch their aircraft because they were running out of fuel. They were never heard from again. At this point, several land radar stations had finally determined that Flight nineteen planes was somewhere north of the Bahamas and east of the Florida coast. A search and rescue marina with thirteen crew members departed in Flight of Flight nineteen. The plane radioed they were beginning their mission. That was the last transmission from them as well. Several large seas and air search were conducted, but no trace was ever found of the fourteen men of Flight nineteen. The thirteen men of the marina on their planes. Naval officials maintained stormy weather whilst the plane. The lost squadron, as they became known, was now part of the Bermuda Triangle. Back to the day.
Okay, approval of the minutes? I do, I do have one, one change here on, let's see, page nineteen. We don't have any.
We don't have any.
Mayor, there are minutes. We're not, yeah, there shouldn't be any. There are no minutes on this one. Susan's still working on those from there.
Okay, good enough. Presentation. The, I guess this is, come on up Pam. Pam Richmond's going to give us a presentation on the Okoye Apokka Road and, you know, as we look forward to the future and all the development going out that way, we wanted to at least get kind of a, kind of a game plan moving forward before it, before it hits us in the head.
All right. So we're for the full lane, right?
Pam?
I've been told by virtually every person in this room to be brief, so I'll try and go fast. What I want to talk to y'all about is exactly what the mayor said. I want to show you all the developments that today we know about that are along the Okoye, Apokka corridor within the city and some thoughts on how we might address what we know is coming in traffic. So here's the map. I know it's hard to see in other, in future slides. I've broken it up so you can see it a little better. And this is a listing of all the developments, and I've labeled them as either under development, approved but not under construction, under construction, recently opened, or conceptual, meaning a concept plan has been discussed with staff, but nothing's been submitted for development review yet. Within these sixteen developments, there are twelve residential projects, seven commercial, three industrial, two office, a hotel, a skilled nursing facility, and a charter school. The skilled nursing facility, which is number seven, or Greystone. Okay. Oh, I'm on, okay. Greystone, which is right here. It's already open, and so is the Florida Prep School, which is right there. So this is, this is the southern part of the map, so you could see it a little easier. The developments you see there are Oak Point North and South, one and two. Number three is the Engelman property. Four is a industrial development, and five or six are proposed projects. This is just so you, for a point of reference, this is Oak Point South. It's residential. And I think it's got like a hundred and eighteen homes and a hundred and twenty townhomes. It's not going to have a lot of impact per se on Okoye Apokka Road because it fronts McCormick Road, and McCormick Road is, is not in the city. It's, I think it's a county road, but it's mostly impacted by the city of Okoye. And then this is Oak Point North along Okoye Apokka Road. Right now, we only know about apartments that are coming in, but it has the potential to do some retail. They haven't brought that in. They've only brought in the, the apartments, and it's going to be a D.R. Horton project. This is the industrial site across the street. It is two warehousing units. The reason I wanted to talk about these three projects is because Oak Point North and this project, it's, it's kind of hard to see here. But we asked them to give us thirty feet of right-of-way. They did give us, well, they didn't, they committed, they didn't give it to us. They dedicated it in case we want to buy it later. Well, we don't generally buy right-of-way. So what they're doing is they're putting right and left turn lanes. The right and left turn lane, though, the left turn lane runs with the turn lane that turns into Oak Point South, right here, so there'll be overlap. So essentially what we're going to end up with is a virtual third lane there. If they won't give us right-of-way, it's going to be hard for us to ever widen that, so we'll have to make the kind of three-lane segment work there. This is the Engelman property. I just put it in there because I thought y'all might be interested in. It would be a very nice project for the city. They wanted, they talked in, before COVID hit, about a hotel and a nice restaurant. I don't know what the future for hotels and restaurants are right now. And I don't really have an update to give you, but it will have the potential to impact the Okoye, Apokka corridor and might help or stimulate a need for a signal at Binion and Okoye Apokka. So, let's see. This is the next segment up, and we already talked a little bit about. This is Greystone, the skilled nursing facility. This is a, an apartment complex that they're going to have, that's called the Residence at Emerson, and they're going through the development review with a hundred and three townhomes. This is Alta East Shore. It, the apartments are underway, but the thing that, the unknown here is there are two out parcels. I don't know if they're going to develop them, but when they do, their, their entitlements could be as much as fifty-three thousand square feet of retail, which is, you know, a sizable amount of, of, of development. And then this is just an interesting piece of property. It's about three acres, I think. And we've had interest. People have come in and talked to us about either doing a daycare there or medical office, you know. Oh, and on this one also, you can see, I drew in the alignment for, or a proposed alignment for Harmon Road where we connect the two pieces from here to here, and y'all approved the expenditure of the funds at last meeting. This is Alta, Alta East Shore, just to refresh your memory about how much development is there. They are putting, to help with the, this is Binion, of course. They're, they're having to put turn lanes here and turn lanes on Harmon. And when you're talking about two-lane roads and you're not at a real capacity issue, but kind of getting there, turn lanes get people off the road so that the through traffic can continue to flow. And then this is the, the top section. Of course, the, the big piece here is the Bronson property. And I wish I'd put this up there for you. It, it is, it's going to have three hundred thousand square feet of commercial, six hundred and forty-three single-family, three hundred and three townhomes, three hundred and seventy-eight apartments, one and a half million square feet of industrial, and seventy-five thousand square feet of office. Let's see if I can just go to the next slide.
Three hundred and, how many acres? Three hundred and?
Three hundred and sixty, I think. Three hundred and sixty-seven. Did I go the right way? Yeah, there it is. So, I know that's hard to read, but for what they're proposing, I've already told them that this intersection at Boy Scout and Okoye Apokka Road, y'all may have seen this, but it's because Okoye Apokka Road is curved and super elevated there, and there's also a natural drop-off. Google Maps or Waze or whoever, when they bring the big trucks that come in that go across the street, they'll bring them down here sometimes and across here, and they get up on that and they bottom out on the road, and they get stuck, and it blocks both lanes of Okoye Apokka Road, which is, it's an inconvenience, you know. And the problem is, it's hard to get around them. Y'all all know what it looks like right there because the entrance to that warehouse project across the street is practically on the road. So the first thing we told them is, they're going to have to fix that. And because they're creating this need for additional capacity on Boy Scout, if it's determined it needs to be widened, that's on them. They are sort of planning maybe another road here. That's, it will help offset traffic coming out of their site and maybe allow this intersection to work a little better, but it's all still going on Okoye Apokka Road. And so going into it, they know that they're probably going to have to give us some right-of-way. I think it's going to be impossible to widen because of the drop-off, but what we can do is use turn lanes and maybe just do a three-lane segment. This is, this is really an important project, opportunity to bring jobs, lots of impact fee money, which the impact fee money, of course, we're going to try and use for getting Okoye Apokka Road so it doesn't go to Level of Service F gridlock. I put that back in for a reason. Let's see. Okay, so this is my last slide, and what I wanted to point out to y'all is when we realign, or when we connect Harmon Road, the fire department has always been looking at this spot right here to put Fire Station Fox Six. Thank you, you read my mind. And so we're making sure to coordinate with Sean, and, and they're doing what, the studies that they need to do to see if that's the case. But that's another consideration for everything that's going on in this area. And I guess what I want to leave you with is that we're asking all these developments, when they come in, to donate right-of-way if it's, if they can. There are places where, oh, I know I had that last slide in there. I have four stars on this map, here at Keene, at Harmon, at Boy Scout, and Marden Road. They've all been told that they're going to have to pay their proportionate share, you know, where their impacts are on these. So this is the charter school, and these are apartments. They've already committed to their proportionate share of the signal and intersection improvements at Marden. These two developments, I guess I passed on those. This is where we keep thinking Publix is going to come in. We've had two different developers come in and talk to us on that site for a Publix. This site, about three hundred and fifty apartments, they're supposed to bring their development in to start the review process by the end of the month. And we asked them if they could line up here somehow to access at that signal, and they also know that they're going to have to give us right-of-way and pay for their part of the signal. So, and that's what everyone's been told. You know, if you don't give us right-of-way, that's fine. We can't make you, but we can't buy it either. And when we get to a place where we can start doing these fixes, if you haven't donated right-of-way and we need it, we're going to move on to another section until, you know, we can have the resources together. So, having said all that, I just need to remind you, Okoye Apokka Road is not our road. Orange County has sort of told us that we took all the impact fee money when we annexed everything, and so maybe we should be the ones to fix it. I don't think it's a high priority for them, but when they'd been approached before, we didn't bring anything. We have been aggressively trying to get the resources that we need so that they can partner with us to fix the road. Obviously, it's going to go on Metro Plans list for maybe an ultimate fix, but for right now, I think access management, three lanes, turn lanes are, are going to satisfy the need out there. There are too many places where four lanes just are not going to work. I, I'm reluctant to say we should take the road just because, before we could get to any roadway projects, there are millions of dollars, as Commissioner Smith knows, of stormwater issues. And, and that would all fall on us. Anything that's going on with that roadway right now, if we took it, we'd own it. So my recommendation at this point is that we just keep doing what we're doing, get ourselves set up, collect impact fee money, and use it wisely to fix the things that we can and continue to partner with Orange County to help them see the light. And I know that wasn't brief, and I apologize, but.
Mr. Becker? So where does that proportionate share money go to, then? Does that go to Orange County, or we're, so we're brokering the, the conversation, but yet that, those funds go to Orange County to fix the road that we say aren't getting fixed?
No, it will come to us, and, and we will fix the road, with or without their financial assistance.
That's a piecemeal approach, right? I mean, we would only hit certain sections to fix, or? Because you say it's okay, but you say it in a tone where we'll settle for a third-lane access, but that's not going to, that's not.
Some people think that it needs to be four-lane. I don't think it needs to be four-lane. The traffic volumes, even the forecasted traffic volumes don't suggest that it needs to be four-lanes. But there are people that I'm not ever going to convince them of that.
Well, right now, but, because a lot of that stuff that you pointed out is future development. So, yeah, I mean, the argument could be made, right at this point in time, yes, it's maybe not required, but if all of that stuff comes to fruition, I mean, the Bronson property alone would warrant something like that, as well as those industrial and new residential down off south of Okoye Apokka.
It could.
So how do, so how do we help you? How do we set you up for success to get to where we want to get to long-term?
Well, what I'd like to do is just a, a corridor analysis that will give you exactly what you asked for, either one way or the other, saying in twenty years, it needs to be a four-lane road. I don't want to do anything on this corridor that's throwaway. So if we just, you know, if we go and do three-lane segments, and then we have to come back and do four lanes, there's some throwaway in that. But that's also why I'm asking people for right-of-way. We're going to be limited in what we can do by who's willing to help us with right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, with the, with the growth trajectory of Winter Garden, Okoye, and us, I mean, if you want to just want to think of it as a tri-city kind of concept, Okoye, Apokka is the main connector between those three. So the question of whether or not we'll need a four-lane road is, that's a no-brainer. We will. It's just how do we, how do we take the necessary steps, and how do we pace it with the developments that are coming in to make sure that it's done in the right timeframe? That's what I would be interested in, and, you know, obviously, this presentation reaffirms that, so.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I'm that person that you're not going to convince a dozen to be four-lane. And, and the reason why I say that, you know, we, we keep going with all the development, but unless we have the infrastructure in place to support the development, I, I think we're throwing money away by, by doing fixes along the way. And I think the, the fact that where the hospital is, and that's a main route for the ambulance to get to the hospital, and there's nowhere for traffic to get off the road to allow them to pass warrants it being four-lane. And then the proposal of a five-station six being placed there, then that's more emergency traffic than we have. There are tracks and trailers that travel that road because of the industrial complexes, and when they come around the curves, they're on the opposite side of the road. And, and so, and again, there's nowhere for traffic to go. So I, I, I'm convinced that it, it needs to be four-lane. And, and I'm not sure, at one point, you said that somebody, there was a big drop-off, so it wouldn't allow us to make it four-lane. I'm not sure where that big drop-off is.
Boy Scout, right at where Boy Scout hits.
Right, talking about where the trucks get stuck.
Yeah, yeah.
And that can't be fixed?
It can, but at great expense. I understand what you're saying, and I mostly agree with, with what you've said, but I think that there are certain things that we're never going to be able to want, to afford or want, actually want to spend that much money. I don't know what the crystal ball really says in twenty years. I don't know how we'll be driving. I'm not a real strong proponent about widening roads. I, I believe that access management, three-laning roads, medians, turn lanes, those solve a whole lot of problems. Where, you know, you can four-lane something, and maybe in places, the road needs to be four-laned. What I, what I really should do is have a, a full corridor study done, much like the one we're doing for Kelly Park Road, to see when, I mean, there, we know we're going to have to go to four lanes, at least in the Kelly Park Form-based code area. But when is that actually needed? And, and how far out does that four-laning need to go? Here, it, it would be the same thing. When is that four-laning needed? And where exactly? It might not be needed along the whole corridor, and there are a lot of roads where you transition between four lanes and three lanes. You know, if Publix were to come in and Apartments across the street, down at the, our southern end of the corridor, down by Keene Road with the signal there, that would probably be a, a good area to have four lanes, much like what's in front of the hospital.
And I think the intersection at Keene Road is probably, right now, the most dangerous area
It is.
because there's that blind curb, and people come down Keene Road, and they're taking chances darting out there.
We have an agreement with Adventist Health to help pay for a signal there, but with the agreement, it was, they wanted to wait to do it until we four-laned the road. We cannot wait till we four-laned the road to put a signal there. So that's why I'm asking all these developers to pitch in. We'll take their impact fee money and signalize that intersection. We can plan the signal for more lanes there, but we can't wait until we four-laned to put a signal. I definitely agree with you.
But like, one of the things she was talking about is like, if we get the mast arms, she would set it up for a four-lane versus putting it in for the two-lane that is currently there.
They have to come back and move them.
Exactly, because those things are expensive to move, and so that's, you know, one of the things that we can do that would go either three-lane or four-lane, and we could just move it along the mast arm.
And it avoids that throwaway stuff.
The, the industrial park that's already right there at, at John's Road, are they in the city or the county?
The, which industrial park?
The one that already exists there at John.
At, at, at Boy Scout?
At Boy Scout Road, yes.
Um, that's in the city.
That's in the city. So i- is it possible, even though they're already there, to go back and talk with them and, and see if they're willing to also help to offset the expense of, of fixing that because it's their trucks that's getting stuck there trying to cross that ditch?
Yes, it's possible. Some people have more clout than I do with regard to things like that.
But you look better than we do.
They, they have a, another problem, too. The, they're opening the throat. It's, it's too narrow. And that predates all of us. I don't, not really sure how that happened. But if you have somebody trying to exit there in a big truck and one trying to turn in, it, it's essentially gridlock.
Right.
Which is why a turn lane right there specifically, or turn lanes there would help that situation.
But it's possible to have conversation with them to talk about contributing to fixing that area? Okay.
Because they'd be getting a signal.
All right.
Mr. Becker?
Uh, y'all already covered different questions that I had. I had another question about the fire station being put in there, and that, you kind of covered that. So a different direction, the magic word restaurants. I think with all of this projected growth, this is a, a real enticement, again, for the restaurants to come in, because we have, their big issue, and for those that don't know, is the noontime traffic. That's that tipping point, and with the jobs that are being brought in with the commercial, that's starting to tip that in, and obviously, the, the populace is there. So it, are we, are we working on marketing those things with the economic development?
Tony Bench, who's the one who's kind of managing the, the Engelman property, which is at, right next to Magnolia Park, so just south of Magnolia Park. He's pretty confident, he's got a restaurant group that has a restaurant on Lake Weir, and I, for the life of me, can't tell you the name of it.
Can't remember either.
But it's a really cool, like a, like a catfish house on steroids, is the way I put it. And he thinks they're pretty committed to that spot. He's not so sure yet whether the hotel, based on, you know, tourism, will, will, will be the, you know, come out of the gate. But he thinks the restaurant is, is a legitimate, ready-to-go project. So I, I think we'll see. I know the, this, the same group is finishing up one on, in Kissimmee, or excuse me, in Leesburg, and I think this will be their next location to, to build. So I, he feels pretty confident that's going to be there. He's looking at the single-family and some multifamily along. Hotel would be probably the last thing to kind of come, come aboard there at that site. So that restaurant, from what I, from what I gather, is pretty, pretty solid.
And are we working with the Chamber as far as their push to develop that, to reach out to restaurant chains, different things in some of our, our other development areas, using these as tools? This is what's coming. This will support your business model.
Yeah, and it's like for Harmon Road, the other thing that, you know, we're, we're having to negotiate with CFX and with Advent to get the right-of-way to get Harmon Road, that extension completed. So we need both, both, need help from both of them to get that completed. And then we've got to have a meeting with Advent to, to see where, you know, they're, they've agreed to help us with the site for the, the, the new fire department, Station Six. Question is, do we do it where, where we have it on this map, or do we leave it where it is today? And so that's, we've got to kind of get that finalized, then we've got to finalize the.
I think Sean had a conversation with them about a, what they thought about location. So I don't know, they may be okay with this. They thought about maybe on the other side of the road, maybe just to preserve their part of the parcel. But for, for the location, it, it needs to be more where they're, what did you call it? The people that study that and tell you the response time that helps you with?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they look, they look at.
Yeah, and, and this is actually a pretty good location. If we went on the other side of the road, which it would essentially be the same, that's where that burrow pit is, where they dug all that dirt out and took it to the expressway and made lots of money, and, and it's like a fifteen-foot drop. So, you know, we would have that at, at expensive, by now buying the dirt back that got taken out.
Well, again, a comprehensive study of the long-term effects of that really is going to help us to not throw away money, but also plan for the future, so.
And I'm coordinating with our public services department to make sure that I'm not throwing out anything that, that we can't do or shouldn't do. I, I do agree with you, Commissioner Becker, that it, it sounds a little piecemeal, but for right now, really, the plan is to. But for right now, really the plan is to get right of way, to figure out where, what we can and can't do, and where we have willing partners and where we don't. They're gonna just fall to the end of the list. And I think we'll start with the signals and some access management while we're figuring out that long-term solution. Because it will make a difference.
Any other questions for Pam? Okay, thank you Pam, appreciate it. Be sure to get, John, do you, Perry, do you have the presentation? Can you be sure to get that to John Perry? That'd be great. Okay, Susan, public comments.
Do you have Ray Fuller?
It's Pollard.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, guests. My name is Ray Fuller, I'm with Beehive Masonic Lodge 779. And I'm here today with fellow members of my lodge over there. And we're here to find out if we can get access to a warehouse that's owned by the city, located on South Forest Street. We have a handout for you there. But quickly, tell you a little bit about us. We've been in Apopka now since February 2014, serving our community. We've done things at the John Bridges Center. We support the Loaf and Fishes, the Youth Survival Summit, the National Night Out, Law Enforcement Night Out, we march an MLK parade, and we support all our local churches down in the south of Apopka, in which St. Paul AME Church, under the direction of Reverend Gerard Moss, supports us right now with the building. However, we need our own building because we're growing. And we're growing to support our community here in Apopka. And I provided a couple of slides for you to get familiar with where the building is located. And we're coming to find out if, by chance, we can get that building and use it for our purpose to help continue to grow and support our community.
Well, I could tell you that this is kind of in the middle of where we're talking about a public safety building. So I don't know at some point whether we're gonna be taking that whole, that whole block there and putting a, be a fire and police station on either side, and then IT and finance in the middle. We'll take that whole block. And so I don't know that we could, you know, commit. It's, I don't know, for short term, I think, you know, maybe we could. It's not, buildings got leaks, it's got vermin, it's got all kinds of things. And there's a lot of stuff in there as well, a lot of it which we should be, we should be getting rid of.
If we can't, may I, not interrupt you, but if we can't get that building, anything that the city can provide for us and help us out with, to get moving, to eventually we can get on our own feet, to support ourselves, would be great. Would be great.
So what do you, you're looking just for storage space, or for a meeting place?
For a building to hold our meetings, and to have, conduct a few functions here and there, to better support the community.
So the building you have down on Lake?
We don't have a building right now.
Okay.
St. Paul AME, that's a small room from them.
Okay.
To hold our meetings. But we've grown past that now. Our capacity with the members coming in now, we're bigger, and we're ready to...
Go to the next level.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Edward?
Mayor, we may be able to look through some of our, some of the properties that we have, and maybe kind of circle back with you, kind of look and see what we've got. I mean, we have another, a couple of other little places. You know, the only concern is, is if you're gonna have meetings in them, you know, we want them to be safe. They, you know, you can't, you wouldn't wanna hold a meeting, I don't think, in this building here, because it leaks and doesn't have power, and it's got, you know, some creatures in there, I think, living that you probably wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't wanna have meetings with. But, so, but we could look, if you wanna, maybe, you know, I can give you my information. We'll look around and see what we do have, because we have some other places that might work for, I mean, we can look at, at least, and see if it works for something like that. But unfortunately, fortunately, we're using a lot of our space. We don't have a lot of space that, you know, that's, but we can look at that and get with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, John.
Yeah, just, I wanted to ask a question, just in general understanding, there's different lodges. Does each have their own vision, they're just completely separate? Or is there a coordination of different things that you do as an organization?
They're different, yes, they're different. And there's one located down the street here, across from Burger King, and there's another one over there. But they're all different, but we have similar missions, and we support many different functions.
But just completely autonomous with purpose?
Yes.
And the other question, John Bridges Center, is that something, I know she listed there, is that something that you did to help them?
No, we help them every year with our food giveaways, supporting the kids down there, John Bridges Center. Whenever they have a function, they ask us to help them out, and we'll be there for them.
And I wonder, do they have even any room just for transitional space as you're looking to establish?
That's owned by the county, I think, and...
Yeah. So you need just meeting space, like one night a week, one night a month, two nights a month?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Need, name and address for the record, please.
Lonnie James Jackson. I'm part of Beehive 779, Apopka, Florida. We're looking for a place that we can hold our meetings. We hold meetings twice a month.
Okay.
But, and that being said, we also have things that come up, we might have to have additional meeting. And not only that, we're trying to open it up for the underprivileged kids. Ain't got nowhere to go here. South Apopka kids have nowhere to go. Not only South Apopka kids, we're talking about kids of Apopka that we can bring in. We have teachers, we have warriors, we have doctors that are part of us. We're part of the shrine. And we wanna tap into those resources so that we are, we have a greater impact. We started small, but our numbers have grown. For as the men that's here and working with us, we'd like to get into a place that we would keep the upkeep. Anything that's wrong with it, we will fix it, to bring it up to par to the standards of the day. So, my worship master Ray, myself, Brother Bryant, and Brother Wilson, I'm a founding member. And we've been working in the community, we help different organizations in the community that came to us with different stuff, backpacks, Thanksgiving, Christmas. And it's time for us to move up. And we would appreciate if we could get some help with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, anything?
Well, I mean, I understand their need and what it is that they do. Of course, you know, I'm a Mason as well. So, I think as good as Mr. Bass indicated, that we look and see what we have available in the city that they might be able to use for the purpose that they're doing. We know the Masons do a great deal of in-kind services to the community and provide resources as well. And so it would be a worthwhile endeavor. So, we'll see what Mr. Bass can come up with.
All right. Mr. Becker? Okay. All right, thanks guys, appreciate y'all coming down. Anybody else, Susan? Okay. The consent agenda, I had one for Chief McKinley. Under the agreements you've got for the street, private street agreement in there, it, as to the city, it says city manager should be city administrator. Not a big deal, but we just need to change that, that's on page 19. So I need to put city administrator. Anybody else?
And we probably already answered the conversation during the presentation portion. My only question on the engineering for the streetlight at Vic and Lester. So that would, that would be a mast arm type of situation, so that would account for any future road widening, that sort of thing. So, I know in the design, we talked about potentially adding turn lanes on Vic. So that would, by its nature, have each section four lanes. But then if we four lane the entire stretch of Vic Road, you would have to add even more laneage to that, correct? So...
Commissioner, and the situation we've got up there is very, very difficult to sit there and actually place for a future four lane because of the right of way and just the terrain there. That, we're gonna try and place the poles where we can out of the way, but we can't make guarantees as we move forward with it. We'll kind of see what we can do. The good news is, is that, well, good news slash bad news is Vic Road's not right around the corner. It's years away, it's minimum, minimum of five years out, probably closer to 10 before we do the widening there, to be quite honest with funding and such. And the traffic signal typically will end up paying for itself in about two years, as far as the congestion and such. As much as we'd like to be able to keep it there, you know, through the construction and everything, the years and years that I've been doing this and trying to do it, we always end up having to move something anyway.
Okay. But just having that lens, as you're entering into this design phase with this company, that's what we're trying to strive for?
I'm actually gonna manage that project personally.
Okay.
Wow. That's the reason we brought you all the way from Houston, take care of Vic Road for us. Mr. Smith? Okay. So if not, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Banks, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, final development plan, who's this? Bobby Howell.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. Final development plan for the South Mused Avian Point details construction of 102 town home units on 13.9 acres within the Avian Point PD. The Avian Point PD allows for the development of 758 residential units consisting of single-family, town homes, and apartment units. Consistent with the approved PD master plan and preliminary development plan, two-story townhomes and six- and eight-unit buildings with a minimum living area of 1,350 square feet and one-car garages are provided in the development. There are two access points that are provided that are located along Grand Avian Parkway that'll lead into the development. All elements of the final development plan are consistent with the approved PDP and the PUD master plan. And the Development Review Committee recommends approval, and staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, staff would be happy to answer, as well as the applicant.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby?
I guess I'm overly hypersensitive to it now, based off of Mr. Weatherford's presentation a couple of weeks ago. And especially this property too, sitting on what was, you know, the wetland pieces of this property. So, where this resides, obviously that was fairly low lying prior to development. You'd get a lot of pooling, ponding of water if there was heavy rains. Are there any concerns similar to the McCormick property, land grading, anything like that, that would impact your concerns around flooding, potential high water marks, that sort of stuff?
No, sir, this has been reviewed through the Development Review Committee about the third time now. They've had the PDP and the final development plan, they've turned it to geotechnical studies that prove that the ground is capable of supporting the development. It's not in a flood zone, there are no wetlands on the property.
You wanna have the applicant come up? I think he's nodding his head, why don't you have him come on up? Name and address for the record, please.
Frank Porter with the NV5, address 201 South Bumbi. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there is a wetland adjacent to the property, and I don't know if you can go back to... Yeah, just our plan there. See in the top left corner, how the road is adjusted that way? That is to avoid those wetlands that are there. And those wetlands were flagged by St. John's and identified as the area that we need to avoid. So that's, so we did stay away from those little island areas, but there's a wall put around there to kind of keep everything up and away from it.
And you've got a fairly flat grade that you're restricting on anyhow?
Yeah, the rest of the ground is all flat and ties in with the Grand Avian roadway.
Good, Commissioner Becker? Mr. Smith?
I'm good.
Good?
Just one question. I see area for green spaces, is there any recreational planning as far as that goes? I'm not seeing it there.
Yes, sir, that was a plan that's part of the PUD. Just south of this is an entire recreational facility with soccer field, top lot, tennis courts.
So there's access to that, walkways and all those?
Yes, sir, they'll have direct access to it, and there'll be a school below that.
Okay, great. Okay.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the final development plan. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up. Ordinance number 2798.
Ordinance number 2798. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the city comprehensive plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city industrial for certain real property located north of Okoye Apopka Road and east of State Road 451, comprising 8.76 acres more or less, and owned by Sandrone Joseph Estate, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner Two with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from county rural to city industrial for approximately 8.76 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located north of Okoye Apopka Road and east of State Route 451. To the north and south is an agriculture property, also known as the Talton Parcel. To the west is a vacant property, and to the east are industrial properties. The property is owned Transitional District with an application for IL, Light Industrial Zoning, which will be presented at the next agenda item. The subject area is approximately 8.76 acres with industrially zoned or industrially oriented properties being in the vicinity. The Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from county rural to city industrial. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2798 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on December 16, 2020. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Any questions? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2798 at first reading and hold over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2799.
Okay, ordinance number 2799. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to IL Light Industrial District for certain real property located north of Okoye Apopka Road and east of State Road 451, comprising 8.76 acres more or less, and owned by Sandrone Joseph Estate, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from T Transitional District to IL Light Industrial District for the same property as the previous agenda item. The proposed light industrial zoning is compatible with the previously proposed industrial future land use. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning from Transitional Zoning to Light Industrial Zoning. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2799 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on December 16, 2020. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Okay.
Just wanted to add into the record that we are gonna ask them for some right of way, correct?
The Magic Road.
Mr. Smith, he wants that four lane.
They've been told that they have to give right of way, and that we're gonna put a signal there, and they are going to, we're not gonna make them pay 25%, even though they're getting 25% of the use. But it's an advantage to their project. So they'll line up their access right there at Martin Road and pay their fair share.
Thank you.
Oh, so they're coming in the backside of that property then, not on the...
No, they're gonna be on Okoye Apopka Road.
No, no, I get that, but did you just say that they would line up with Martin?
Well, if it signalizes me, Martin.
Right.
They're expanding.
Ah, that makes sense.
I'm thinking of the whole property.
I'm just looking at the border that's on there right now.
That's a good point, Commissioner Becker. The applicant has expressed intent of industrially developing that parcel as well as the two west adjacent parts.
So you'd have two access points on there?
At least two.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay.
Probably just two, okay.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2799 at first reading and hold it over for second reading and adoption.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Beck, Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2800.
Ordinance number 2800. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka comprehensive plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county industrial and city industrial to city commercial for certain real property located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lake view Drive, comprising 4.88 acres more or less, and owned by Mid Florida Freezer Properties, LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Subject property is located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lakeview Drive and is 4.88 acres in size. You can see on the site location map, the property is primarily surrounded by commercial uses. The properties were annexed into the city on December 31, 1996, and October 21, 2020 by ordinance numbers 1022 and 2794. The applicant is requesting future land use amendment from county and city industrial to city commercial in order to construct convenient stores with gasoline sales on the property. Proposed commercial future land use consist, is consistent with the surrounding areas. 441 is a commercial corridor. The Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both recommend approval and staff recommends approval. The staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Jared, you don't need to speak if you don't want to. All right, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2800 at first reading and hold over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2801.
Okay, ordinance number 2801. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional district and IL light industrial district to C core corridor commercial district for certain real property located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lakeview Drive, comprising 4.88 acres more or less, and owned by Mid Florida Freezer Properties, LLC, providing for a severability and for an effective date.
Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Bobby Howell. This is the companion rezoning ordinance of the future land use amendment that you just approved. It's taken the rezoning from transition and the light industrial to commercial corridor to be consistent with the adopted, or not the adopted, but the recently approved commercial future land use designation. If you have any questions, staff and applicant are here.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby?
I know, it's premature to the conversation, right, for zoning, but just long-term, based off of the intended use, you've got a lot of residential on that street on the east side of that property. So when we go into the, the planning stages, obviously we would need to take that into effect or into account, especially with the high nature of vehicle traffic that would go with a property like that.
Correct, yeah. And they would have to coordinate transportation through FDOT and then Orange County as well. So we're working on that aspect of the plan right now.
Even, I mean, even to go as far as like light pollution, that sort of stuff that might come from a, from a-
Correct. Lights would have to be the down-mounted type lights that don't produce spillover. We have foot candle readings that can't go that far from property lines. Basically, you won't get any illumination from the property lines.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2801 at first reading and hold over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2802.
Okay, ordinance number 2802. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka comprehensive plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from mixed-use to industrial for certain real property generally located north of Hoggshead Road and west of Hermit Smith Road, owned by Chori Holdings LLC, Chori Holdings One LLC, comprising 11.94 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay, Phil?
The applicant is proposing a large-scale future land use amendment from mixed-use to industrial for approximately 11.94 acres. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow and located north of Hoggshead Road and west of Hermit Smith Road. To the north is a railroad and State Route 441. To the east and south are residential properties, and to the west is a vacant property as well as warehousing. The properties are zoned mixed-use east shore gateway, and an application for light industrial zoning has been submitted and will be presented at the next agenda item. Subject area is approximately 11.94 acres with industrially zoned or industrially oriented properties being in the vicinity. The Development Review Committee and, and Planning Commission recommend approval of the large-scale future land use amendment from mixed-use to industrial, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 28, 2802 and authorize transmission to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2802 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2803.
Ordinance number 2803. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from MUESGT mixed-use east shore gateway sub-district to IL light industrial district for certain real property located north of Hoggshead Road and west of Hermit Smith Road, comprising 11.94 acres more or less, and owned by Chori Holdings One LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Phil?
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from MUESGT mixed-use east shore gateway district to IL light industrial district for the same subject properties as the previous agenda item. The proposed light industrial zoning is compatible with the previously proposed industrial future land use. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning to IL light industrial district, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2803 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil?
I don't say this in a bad way, but we may have to change our slogan here in the City of Apopka, in terms of the indoor foliage capital to- I, I say that in a good way. I mean, there's, there's a tremendous amount of interest right now in the City of Apopka and some great tenants coming in here, so it's, it's a good thing.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2803 at first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2808.
Okay, ordinance number 2808. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional T to residential country estate, RCE, for certain real property located at 1701 Hermit Smith Road, comprising 2.52 acres more or less, and owned by John and Grace Johnson, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bobby Howell, once again, Planning Manager for the record. The property is located at 1701 Hermit Smith Road and is 2.52 acres in size and is zoned transitional. The applicant's requesting a rezoning of the property residential country estate in order to do a lot split, basically to divide the property into two lots. They have 2.52 acres, the transitional zone has a minimum lot size of 2.5 acres, so the math doesn't work. Residential country estates requires a minimum of one-acre lot size, so that's the reason for the request. The Development Review Committee recommends approval and the Planning Commission recommend approval, and staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, staff and applicant are here.
Questions for Bobby? Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on the matter? Okay. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2808 for, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, resolution 2020-37, public records fees.
Okay, resolution 2020-37. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a fee schedule as authorized by Section 119.07 Florida statutes for copies of public records and service fees for providing public records and providing an effective date.
Good afternoon, members of the council. The resolution is being brought forth. This was worked in conjunction with the city attorney's office, the city clerk's office, as well as the police department, in regards to what are permissible fees that can be charged for public records that are requested. The police department has had its own policy in regards to the requests for copies and for inspection of public records. What this resolution is doing is going to basically now coordinate and unify a uniform policy for the city to cover all of the city's departments. We're basically assuming the current policy that the police department had, which is the charging of fees which are allowable by state statute for copies of public records that are requested. Also, if the request involves more time-consuming work on the part of the department of, of which the records are kept, the time for the employees to conduct the search and prepare the applicant, prepare the request can also be charged to the public. All of this is permissible by, by state statute. So we have set up by resolution, by, we've created a fee resolution which will establish what the fees are for the copies, for any other items to be presented, as well as the time for employee services in order for the, the requests to be completed. This fee resolution can be brought to you on an annual basis for any adjustments, or we can keep it as-is until the need arises for adjustments to the fees. But we want it to present to the council for its approval because this is a city fee that is going to be charged. The public want it to be presented and prepared in, in the form of a fee resolution. So I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Michael?
Is this based on other municipalities as far as the fee schedule?
Yeah, other cities, well, our, the fee schedule as presented is actually what the police department has been charging the public for. I can't remember right, right off the top of my head, I don't remember how long they've been charging, but it is comparable with other municipalities in what they charge for the copies. Practically speaking, if a member of the public is requesting to review public records and doesn't necessarily want to have copies, the member of the public is still invited, not necessarily invited, but the public, the member of the public still has the right to come to the city to inspect the records without necessarily having to take copies home. He won't be charged for the documents that are presented to him if he doesn't request copies of them. However, if it is something that is labor-intensive and will require a staff member to have to sit and inspect, that is something that is taken into consideration as to whether that is ineligible for a fee for having a staff member sitting there in order to, to observe and to make sure that the records don't disappear, aren't taken as part of the, the inspection.
Commissioner Smith?
And is the public allowed to make copies of those documents by taking pictures of?
They, as is the typical lawyer answer, it depends. Because if it's, if it is a document that has information that is exempt from public records disclosure, a member of the public cannot take a picture of an unredacted document.
All right, so that's-
So it, for example, just as an example for illustration purposes, if a member of the public wants to inspect a police officer's personnel file, they cannot come in and just see the personnel file because the police officer's identifying address, spouse information, all of that is exempt from inspection. So they can't come in, look at the record, take a picture of it, and therefore get around the exemptions. They would then, such information would require redaction, in which then there may be a fee for the employee's time for redacting the documents, and then providing, they can come in and inspect a redacted document, or they can pay for a copy of the redacted document, but they can't come in and take a picture of the unredacted document, nor can they, can they inspect an unredacted document.
And, but they will be charged for the employee that would have to sit there while they inspect the-
Correct. If it, if it, if it falls above the threshold that was established in the fee resolution for the time incurred and the labor incurred for the employee's time.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, so the copies and miscellaneous fees, to your point, they seem pretty boilerplate versus what other cities are doing in terms of price per page, all that sort of stuff. So I don't have a problem with that. If, if you look at other municipalities' websites, the gray area becomes the whole research aspect of things. Here, all the other cities that I looked at didn't really offer up quantifiable dollars, right? And this one we do. So I just want to make sure that we're within Florida statutes as well, because, you know, what our hourly rate for a clerk here is in the City of Apopka might be different than other municipalities. So are, is there a finite dollar amount that's prescriptive?
No, the statutes do not give a finite dollar amount. It is, it, it comes down to reasonableness. And I think the standard which we've adopted from what the police department is would be, it's the lowest rate of the, of an employee of the department that would be doing those works.
Gotcha.
So it-
And they're all based on case law, too. The fees are based on case law, the full draft, they're established with these.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, the, the biggest thing, like, again, if, if you're benchmarked with other cities, like, I think it was Winter Garden, they have a, a formal form that you fill out on their website. And I, do we have, we've got a form here.
We did have one.
Okay.
It's, it's been taken down for ADA, but-
And, and then I know that you had said that as, because obviously the, the public records requests have been quite voluminous over the last, you know, six to 12 months. You're, you're keeping track of that on Excel or whatever the case might be, but, you know, other cities advertise that when a request is made, within two days they'll respond back, or, you know, again, legalese, it's within a reasonable time, whereas I don't think that's quantified from a state law perspective.
No, there, there's no finite, there's no definitive number or time in what is reasonable. I know that in the requests that, that have been made to the city, the clerk is usually responding within 24 to 48 hours, that, that they've acknowledged receipt of the request, and then, then the work is then taken to try to comply with the request. Some requests are simpler than others, and that's where, you know, again, the reasonable as time is going to be related to the type of request that's being made.
So at the end of the day, my, my, my feedback would be, you know, from a fee schedule standpoint, I don't really have an issue with that. It's just the whole process for when requests come in. We, we field the request, we acknowledge the request, we can track the request, because honestly, I, I lose track of all the requests that come through. So that way, if anybody comes and says, hey, what's the status of my request, we're able to answer that question. And then finally, if we meet that threshold of extensive research, we can properly articulate that to the public and how that's kind of assessed and calculated.
Right. We, the, the, the requister would be notified of, this is the time incurred, this is what the amount of the request is going to incur. I believe, if I'm correct, I mean, I, I know that there's some other municipalities will give an estimated price for the person to then pay. If the amount of time comes in less, they're actually refunded a difference, so that it, what you actually pay becomes rationally related to the amount of work that's actually incurred.
Which is covered in that second-to-last paragraph in ours, right? Yeah.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance, or approve rec, resolution number 2020-37.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, city council reports. Mr. Becker, you want to start us out?
Hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Well, I'm sure that we all had a nice Thanksgiving, and the lack of us put on a couple of extra pounds. So that was great.
I resent that remark.
I, I did have a, a question. Are we still having the, the orchestra performance?
Yes.
That's, that's still scheduled.
We're meeting, Brian and the team are meeting out there. Is it tomorrow, Friday?
Friday.
Friday, to kind of figure out the seating, so that we're making sure there's social distancing. What we're, what we're thinking about doing is taking, you know, the chalk that they use at Little League?
Yes.
And we'll start, we'll make some, some square circles on the lawn, so you'll, you'll, you know, your, your pod will be, your six people will be inside.
That square.
And then we'll, 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 every other row will be roped off, and then what we're going to ask is two seats between each party. So if you've got six, you know, then you want to have six rows, but then the next party would have to be three seats over. So we're, we're, yeah, we're going to work on that on Friday to make sure we're, we're good on that.
Okay.
Sounds good. And my last thing is, I've been watching the posting of the vacancies and still have not seen the deputy chief position posted yet. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Banksen?
Just want to commend the staff for getting us into the holiday spirit. The lights look beautiful and ready to kick off the season here in- The lights look beautiful and ready to kick off the season here and celebrate Christmas.
Good, 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 awesome.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'd be remiss if I didn't say. Um, I just want to publicly thank Mr. Hitt for working with the applicant for the Rock Springs Ridge to have, host another community meeting. I know that people had reached out and, but thank you for doing so.
All right, okay, Edward?
So, another month, so we have some more sales tax numbers. Um, I just want to... It's kind of hard to see, I know you have a packet. So you can see that for November, we have the, the November numbers, and you can see that the revenue for November for the sales tax was 700, almost $705,000. Last year, this time, it was $883,000, so there's a 20% reduction from, from last year to this year. And if you look to the far right, you'll see that we're currently operating at a $326,000 difference based on the, the revenue that the state gave us, the projection that they gave us, and where we're actually coming in right now. So overall, it's about a 3.2%. We're, we're sitting at about 3.2 with two months in, we're sitting 3.2% lower than what we projected or what we were given as a state projection. So we'll continue to monitor, you know, and see how, how things go. But I think it's important that you keep that, you know, we all keep that in mind, because this is the number that, that has the biggest impact or the biggest effect. So I think we just keep monitoring this and, and see how things go as we move through the next several months. Keep in mind, when we get to the bottom of this schedule, the numbers that we had last year had, is where we had the, the big impact. So we'll be comparing to actually what last year, what, what we looked like last year when we get past March or April, because that's when we had the hit. But this will be a good snapshot, I think, and I think it's important that we all just keep, keep this in the back of our minds and monitor as we move forward. Hopefully, we'll have some good months. The other thing I had real quick, and I just, because I got word of it today, is that we're talking traffic lights. Finally, the Martin Vic Traffic Light, they are putting the concrete in, they are putting the things in, and Vlad has told me that hopefully, we will have that light up and running before Christmas. So it will be in before the kids go back, or that, once it can go back to school, go back to, to the school. So hopefully, the traffic light will be up and, and ready. So that one's been a long time coming. I know it took a long time to get them to, to make it. So when we get some of these other ones, we need to try to get in the hopper early, so.
Earlier.
Anyway.
Thank you, Edward. All right, mayor's report, you can see the spikes in COVID in the last four or five days. Looks, doesn't look too good, so hopefully, that'll start to trend back down, but, so just everybody be safe out there, and we're going to do our part here at the city. We're, you know, obviously not opening up City Hall, it's still closed, police department's closed, so we're trying to do our part here at the city to, you know, make sure it doesn't spread here at City Hall. Couple of things, we got the tree lighting December the 3rd, along with our farmer's market, so come on down at 6 o'clock for the tree lighting.
December 3rd?
Yes.
Yesterday.
Tomorrow.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna deal here.
Yes, well, I was, I, I got stunned of the, when we first got here, the, on the mayor's or the, the initial screen, it said December 4th, and so I said, wait a minute, that's my wife's birthday, I said, I can't forget that. So, anyway, so tree lighting on December 3rd, craft fair, so we, they reached out to us, our, our farmer's market folks, and said, hey, how about a craft fair? So we're going to do on the 10th and the 17th, along with the farmer's market, craft fair. So anybody that's out there that's got some crafts they want to, to bring to Kittleland-Nelson Park, love to have you, you know, show your wares. Christmas parade, obviously, is December the 12th, 10 o'clock, starting at Methodist Church goes down to Votaw. Really looking forward to it, but we're going to be, we're going to try to do our best to make sure people social distance along the route to do the, you know, to make sure we're, we're being safe. That night is the, the concert at the amphitheater where we'll be, definitely be social distance there. Couple, something we did for the first time last year, which was pretty exciting, the wreaths across America will be back at our cemetery on the 19th of the next Saturday. Really excited about that. We had, I think, Elks came in last minute with a, a big donation to help to, to cover all the costs for our, our wreath, so. And along with that, we've got a, a girl is going to be doing her Eagle Scout project there, so we're going to be putting in the flags for the first time will be presented there on the 19th, so we're, we're really excited about that. Next up, Rock Springs Ridge, you know, the community meeting we talked about, there'll be a Zoom meeting on December 16th from 6:00 to 7:15 p.m. So for anybody out there that wants to listen in, Wednesday, December 16th, 6:00 p.m. to 7:15 p.m. Obviously, it's a council meeting, we'll be, you know, starting at 7, but, you know, so for anybody who wants to do both, you can switch from one to the next. Last couple of things, one is, just to give you an idea on vote count, totals, we've had 3,873 votes already cast as of today, so it's a, you know, big turnout for, obviously for a, a runoff election, for city election, so.
Yeah, I thought everybody would have voting fatigue.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It's a pretty, that's a pretty strong number.
And then last but not least, got, this morning, got to go over and see my good friend Jimmy Patronas, who's a CFO here for the state of Florida, and, and was talking about small business, you know, last Saturday was Small Business Saturday, and, and talking about all the help we need of small businesses here in Florida to, you know, those are the backbone of our, of our workforce, you know, 60% of all jobs are created by small business, and, and one of the things he was, he was really trying to, to hammer home with the state legislators who were there, we had about six of them, he's looking for some kind of a COVID liability waiver so that small businesses that are trying to open up, trying to keep people employed are not subject to lawsuits, these frivolous lawsuits based on COVID infection. So, good, good, good turnout for that, that event, and was glad, good to see him again. So with that...
Hey, mayor, real quick, is there going to be a kind of concerted effort if you plan on going up to Tallahassee and kind of us all, can we collectively understand when that's going to happen? So we, because I don't know how that works if we all schedule time, rotating time with some of the legislatures so we can go up there and kind of...
What I, yeah, you know, it's, it's a later, you know, it's, it's the off year now, so it'll be the later year, it'll be March and April, the first week of May. So what I would do is, we'll, you know, we've got kind of our priorities, which y'all have kind of given me. What I would suggest is if you want us to, you know, Stacy obviously, you know, served in the legislature for 16 years, she'll coordinate any, any meetings you want to have. Obviously, we need to be, you know, because of sunshine law, have to do them separately. So if there are people that you want to see, obviously, we've got a new one in Truenow, represents north side of Apopka and Camia Brown, the south side of Apopka, we can set those meetings up if you'd like, or, or you can do it, and then anybody else, if there's a, a specific, like, somebody from education or healthcare or, you know, infrastructure, if there's somebody you want to see, let us know and we'll, we'll make those appointments for you.
Affordable housing?
Affordable housing, sure, yeah, absolutely. So just let us know what your, what your, you know, obviously, we'll wait to see what the League of Cities does, you know, they'll have a, obviously, a, a couple of days on the Hill, and I'll probably go up at least one more time, maybe two, two more times, depending on if we get some things early in the budget, so. But, yeah, we'll, we'll keep you posted and just let me know who you're, who you want to see. I, I don't know that the, the House yet has, has determined all the, the committee assignments yet, so we'll, may have to wait till after Christmas to get those assignments, and then we can kind of put you into the people you need to, that you want to see, so. With that, thank you.